Well, I appreciate everyone coming. I'm gonna lead the pledge and I'm gonna get Ed to do the prayer. And then we'll get started. I need a few minutes and then I'll introduce you to our speaker. And let him tell you a little bit about what he wants to do and what he's here to do. And then we'll take some questions and see how the meeting goes.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with thankful hearts, Lord, that we can gather like this and discuss what we need to do for our country. And, Lord, we pray that you will send us good leaders. And we pray for our country. And, Lord, it's straight very far from what you've taught us. And we just asked your divine intervention to get us back on the right track, Lord. Be with us this evening as we listen to speakers. Go with each of us as we return home this evening, Lord. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Oh, okay. Well, there's, you know, there's a lot going on, as usual, especially when you have a presidential election. I think that we've got some local elections coming up here also. What I'd like to see, too, is that everyone get involved in some local elections. We've got some things that are gonna be very pertinent at this time. And then, you know, in about, probably a little over a year and a half, we're gonna have some elections for the commission and some school board elections that we need to definitely delve into a little bit. You know, I admire Jeff for getting involved in federal politics. I think everybody here knows how I kinda feel about that. I'm a local politics guy. You know, I think that we need to clean up our own messes first, you know? And I guess, I don't know how I would deal with all that frustration of, you know, being around a bunch of hypocrites all the time. You know, it's bad enough when they're local hypocrites, but you're more likely to say something to them when they're not from where you're from. But, you know, we've got, there's a lot of things going on here locally, too. Some of them I'm not gonna elaborate on too much, but I think that there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some things that come out that are, you know, gonna surprise some people. And sometimes things look bad on the front end, but in the long run, in actuality, they end up being for the good. You know, we can never, we can never take it for granted that your local elected people, representatives, no matter if it's an office or a department, that they are doing the right thing. And I think that it's our due diligence to always stay on top of that. You know, I think a lot of times, people have been elected so long that they forget about who they work for and what the pecking order is. And they're at the bottom. They're the employee, you know, and we're the employer. And I think that we need to, we need to reassert that authority at every opportunity. And so, that's, that's part of, part of what I have planned. I don't have a lot of time sometimes, so sometimes I know your emails come a little bit late, but, you know, I get, I have so many things going on that it makes it difficult sometimes. I'm gonna try to get somebody to help me with some of the setup and do some things like that to move forward. But this isn't something I was planning to speak on, but this is something Charles had brought in and, you know, pointed out that, you know, this is how propaganda starts right here. This is propaganda. Now, a lot of people call things rhetoric. Don't use the term rhetoric unless you're talking about the truth, because rhetoric is the truth told. Propaganda is a lie made to make you perceive it as the truth. So, this is propaganda right here. See? They told us they were gonna have a $12 million school. Now they come back and that school's $17 million. You know, and then, you know, there was a couple of commissioners that fought it and, you know, to no avail. You know, but then they got mad. I don't understand why they got mad. I would think that anybody should point out the fact that you've had a 40% increase in less than a year and a half, and then try to blow it off as it's inflation. You know? Which everybody knows, you know, if you're buying the government line, that we have about 1.5% to 2% inflation. So, I mean, I was willing to give them 2%, but, you know, they didn't want none of that.
We didn't have any inflation.
I know.
You're on social security.
Yeah, that's right. You didn't get an increase. But you, but I'll show you on this page what they're doing here. This is a picture of the science room at Bradley High School. So, what's gonna happen now is, is that they're gonna want you to believe that they have to have a new science building. But see, in that meeting, we sat there and talked about the, you know, about the costs and where we had no growth. I mean, every, what they were gonna do was gonna eat up all the growth money that the county had. And, but they still voted for it, but they said, well, one of them even said, well, if that's the way it is, that's what it has to be. Okay, well, okay, then I'm gonna hold you to that deal. Because then there's no way you can pay for this. It's not possible. Unless, now, if they wanna raise their own money, I'm all for it. Knock yourself out. If you can raise the money to do this, I'm all for you. I'll give you a contribution. But you're not gonna do it on the taxpayer, because I don't like this sort of propaganda. That's what they do. They throw it in the paper. Now, you wait in about six months to see if one of these yo-hos doesn't start talking about kicking a can down the road. Even though you ain't even kicked nothing down no road, because this just started. But that's what the excuse will be, you know? So, if you needed that science room fix or, you know, something outside of the school system's budget, you should've gone back to the $12 million deal we had, instead of bumping it to 17. You know? And, and once you understand that a part of the building, part of the problem was, is that the original school out there, in my personal opinion, is we didn't even need that school. That's my opinion. I looked at it, I was out there, we were out there multiple times. My opinion is it could've been fixed. I thought that that buildings were good for eight to 10 more years. But they wanted that school. And some of you in here know, there's probably no more difficult people to deal with sometimes than people in the school system. Because they don't know anything about business. They don't know anything about money. They don't know anything about how to raise money. They don't know any of that. They think that, well, we just go to the well. And we roll the stick up and here comes the money. That's not how it works, you know? But that's part of what you're seeing here, and I just wanted y'all to look and to notice. And then, in six or eight months, you wait till they start crying for the money for this. Now, I kinda like what McMinn County does, because McMinn County doesn't have any debt. They pay for everything. They don't have any school debt. They just pay for it. Save the money, pay for the school. Save the money, pay for the school. That's what you should do. We wouldn't be in debt. I mean, you've got, you have people that tell you, and I've had this discussion multiple times in the finance committee, that, well, we have to have debt. Why? Well, you know, that's just a good business practice. Why? Why? Well, they say that, you know, that that's kinda based on Keynesian economics, you know, that you can, of course, they also believe you can borrow yourself out of debt. I've never figured that out. But, you know, they, they believe that you have to have a certain amount of debt and that inflation is good.
Build your credit.
Yeah, well, and therein lies the propaganda. Build your credit score, you know? But see, what they've done now is they've taken your credit score from not only getting you credit, but what your insurance cost and a lot of other things. So, what is that?
You have to be a debt.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I think that a credit score, I think, is a sham, you know? But it's part of, it's how the system manipulates you into, you know, buying into the system. But anyway, so, just bear that in mind, that you'll be seeing that coming, you know? And then, you know, anybody who opposes it, they hate kids. I'll just tell you upfront, that's what, that's the story's gonna be. You hate kids.
Don't forget, we actually, we're actually paying for the county member to be lazy and not take a 10-minute service to the healthcare.
Yeah. You know, there's a lot of things, there's a, there's a lot of things that we tried to do, and that was a kind of a, that was an innovative way to actually save, not immediately, but over the long term, save the county some money and actually allow us to have some, put that into some growth. I, I would've liked to use it for debt service, but whatever, you know? But, but you have people who don't think that we give them health insurance, cost to county in excess of $6,000 per employee. So, next time you hear about county employees being underpaid, salary plus benefits plus everything else, you know, add about anywhere from eight to $10,000 to it, you know? So, they're not, you know, that's not underpaid. I don't know a lot of private corporations now that are actually giving the type of insurance that we give, which is a very good policy. So, we were trying to save only on their retirement, and actually, that actually benefited them because it gave them options. The old system, they had no options. You're tied into this, and this is what you got. This other one allowed you to do some things with your own money. The old system tied you in, so if you, if you left within the first five years, you didn't take that with you. The new system would've allowed you to, to take it with you, no matter if you've been here six months. You can take it when you leave. The, and, and part of that whole concept was, is that we allow them to do that because actually the county pays in less, but their potential was better. This only affected new hires. Didn't affect everybody. Now, if you were, if you worked here previously, you could opt into it, but you weren't required to. But you had people on the county, and the survey is about 10 minutes, I take it. But there's people on the county commission that said that, I think one of them said, I don't, I think that's kind of a violation of your privacy. What? Uh, the other one, the other one said, that's too intrusive and, you know, we shouldn't be requiring people to have to fill those things out. And it kinda, you know, it's intrusive because they have to give their blood pressure and stuff. You know, I mean, the platitudes of that blow my mind. You know, I just can't even, I can't even conceive the fact that, that your county commissioners, you don't want to force anybody to do it. If someone takes the job, it's a voluntary contract. Here's what we offer, here's what your insurance entails, and here's what your retirement is. If you want that, you can take the job. If, if you don't want that, you don't have to take the job, and we'll get somebody else. You know? We had heard, too, that, you know, well, that will, that'll impede us from hiring the best people. Well, the state's on it, the school system's on, and I talked to several people in the state, they said, we don't have a problem hiring anybody. So, I mean, it's just, it's just ridiculous. Eventually, we probably will be able to get that in. I think it's something that we need to do, because I think it's an opportunity for the county. I mean, if you look at what some of these big cities and municipalities, their biggest problem is, is their pension funding. How you gonna pay for all that? You know, you can't. They're, they are not gonna be, they're not gonna be able to do it. They can't do it. I don't want ever us to ever get in that position. You know, and this would drastically reduce our, our requirements, because it puts it into, part of it into the private sector, you know? So, these are all sort of things that, when you get involved in this, you realize how resistant people are to change. Not that change isn't better, not that you can't research the change, it's that we've always done it this way. Yeah, therein lies the problem. That's the problem, you've always done it that way. You've never stepped outside of your box and said, we do it this way, but is this the best way to do it? Is this the most cost-effective way to do it? And actually, is this the best for the taxpayer and for the employee? That's a mindset that's hard to change. You know, so, but that's, that's kinda the direction we're working. You know, I think we've got, you know, a pretty good finance committee, and I think that we're, you know, constantly pushing that way. We're gonna try to push towards a, a more accountable departments, you know, through a zero-based, sort of a sort of zero-based budgeting. Not exactly, you can't really, government's a little bit harder to do than corporations as far as zero-based, but you can do something very similar. In other words, just because you got $600,000 last year, you don't get, you may not get $600,000 this year. I want your written explanation of why you need $600,000. Not, and because I got it last year, that doesn't count. If you put that, I'm gonna knock 20% off. So, don't do that. Tell me why you need the money. I wanna see, we wanna see what your budget is. And I think that makes people more accountable, and I think it also requires department heads to be more accountable. You know, I would love to see us just end the 2% automatic raises for employees. I, I think that they should have goals and assessments. I think, you know what? You get paid, here's what you agreed to, and we're gonna carry this on out. Now, here's what we expect of you, and this is the minimum. So, if you just meet the minimum, I don't think you deserve a raise. Why? Because you got a job here and we pay your insurance? You should get a raise? I don't think so. I think that, okay, here's your expectations. Now, if you exceed that, okay, now we can talk about it. But that would require the department heads to manage that, you know? And, yeah, and, you know, and, you know what? And if, if you think that's too much, well, then get up your department head. It's simple. It's really not hard. You know? But if we're paying you to do that, that's what you should do. You know, and that's part of the changes that we need to, you know, that, that we need to see in local government, so that the government can, you know, require the minimum amount of taxpayer dollars to, to achieve the goals that, that the community has. You know, I mean, I think that's what government is. Nobody owes you a job. You know what? Government should be, here's what we need done, we're gonna hire the people to do that. We don't need to hire the people to do this, we just need to hire the people to do this. So, you keep government, you know, costs, because our biggest cost is, you know, is employment. You know, and then, health insurance is huge, too, but, but actually, salaries are our biggest, our biggest monetary requirement, you know? So, those are the things we should do to, you know, to, you know, to keep government in line. But I think that, I think that's a requirement of not only your commissioners, but of, of the general public, too. You know, you should be involved. You know, we have people in this room that are involved that, you know, I'll be honest with you, there's people in here that make my life a lot easier because of the amount of information that they give me, and I can call them and use them as a resource. I'm not that smart. You know, I, I, if I need to know something about accounting, I'd go to call Bill and say, hey, Bill, what about this? You know? If I need to know something about engineering, I got these two guys right here, you know? Especially that guy right there. You know, Charles does a lot. And people, you don't have any idea what he does. We need more people like that. You know what? Because all of you have an enterprise, all of you have a capability, all of, all of you have an understanding of something, you know, that, that, that is, government's affected every day. I mean, we, I've caught things trying to be pushed through this county commission that because I, because I've dealt with cars all my life, I'm like, uh-uh, that don't work like that. That's not true. That's just absolutely not true. You know? And that's what you have to do, you know? If you got, if, actually, you wouldn't want all lawyers up there. I mean, all they, all they know how to do is argue, you know, and try to break the deals. That's all they know how to do. But you know what? If you got a, if you, if you got a plumber, and you got a mechanic, and you got somebody who builds houses, and you got people, you know, all of a sudden, almost any subject that comes up, it's like, well, we got somebody who knows something about that. Yeah, we got a guy that sells insurance, there he is, right there. You know, so, yeah, I mean, all of a sudden, you know, you've got this huge resource pool. So, why would you want to elect all attorneys? Doesn't make any sense, you know? Not to me. But anyway, I'm gonna introduce to you, this is Jeff Smith, and he calls himself Summer, and it's not spelled like you think it is. But he's going to be running against Chuck Flashman. Doesn't have any experience. I don't think that matters. You know? Yeah. You know, just to remind you, Chuck Flashman had no experience when he got elected either, so, and he's a lawyer, so that's another reason to watch out. Yeah, yeah. So, Summer, come on up, and I'll let him give you his bio and let him speak a little bit and kinda get you all introduced.
Thank you so much. Well, first off, I like us to bow our heads in prayer before I start my speech. Our holy Father, which are in heaven, please open our mind to understanding today, and please let all my endeavors be for your glory and not my own. And please help us all in following you and please turn our country back to you. And Jesus, let me pray. Amen. All right, well, I'll give you a little bit of background about myself. I don't wanna talk about myself, but I went to McMinn County High School in Athens, Tennessee. And I graduated in 2005. I ran, incidentally, I ran cross-country in track form for years. And when we won a region, the, each time we ran it, we won against all you guys in Bradley County. And we won state my sophomore year, and very few people in this area actually win state. It's been, that was, that was my life back then, that and politics. Well, I went to college, I went to Tennessee West in all-around scholarship, did two years there and took a few classes, and I was a nursing assistant for years during that time period. And then I went to UTC and earned my Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice. And after I graduated, I had an opportunity to go to Officer's Candidate School for the US Army. And I found out that I wouldn't be able to pick my MOS, that's your military occupational specialty. And I wanted to fight for my country. I was gonna take the fight to the Taliban. At the time, we were still in Iraq. So, I enlisted and joined the infantry. And I spent three years of my life in the 10th Mountain Division in upstate New York. And during that time period, we had Obama's Red Line that was crossing Syria, and we thought we were going, we were gonna do something, but it never, never came to. And I went to California and trained to go to Afghanistan. And for our, and when our regiment came up to go, we only had one platoon out of my company, so I actually got off of deployment. And I fought hard to go to the deployment, and I even tried to be a whole, be, be part of a dog squad that sniffed for bombs in Afghanistan. And when I came home, my wife and I moved into a small house in Athens, Tennessee, where I grew up. And I finished my master's degree in public administration. And after that, I became a C manager in a small town for six months, and then I went to work as a supervisor at the company I'm at right now. But I've thought about running for local offices in and around McMinn County. And I always keep up with federal politics like you guys, and I've kept up with the presidential election. And what's really, what I think's terrible is, we have Republicans that are really Democrats, and they run as Republicans. I think, well, all these ambulance-chasing attorneys do, is they say, well, I'm an attorney and I live in Vermont. Good, I can be a Democrat. Well, I'm an attorney, and I live in Chattanooga, Tennessee, I'll run as a Republican. And I believe that's what we've had in Chuck Flashman. And two years ago, I watched the Weston-Womp debate with, with Chuck. And Chuck, paying Weston, is the huge far-left guy. He went and tried to get Democrat votes, and this and that, and I thought, well, Flashman's the more conservative of the two. But I'm afraid with some of the things that he's done, and you can do the research for yourself, he's the, I mean, he's not, not only is he not in the Freedom Caucus like Scott DeJeray, he does even vote like Jimmy Duncan Jr. And the omnibus bill, I think it's called the Consolidated Act of 2016, you know, he even funded Planned Parenthood affiliates. And on his website says he doesn't support Planned Parenthood. Now, we've all seen the videos last summer, some of the terrible barbaric acts that took place with them negotiating prices, harvesting organs. But when you have your tax dollars go into an organization like that, you're actually paying for abortions. And there's tons of people that don't support that. But here's the thing, when you vote for a 2,000-page bill, and you have to have 1,000 pages of explanatory material, who knows what's in that bill? It's like reading War and Peace. You, I mean, a working mother should know what Congress is up to. It's 435 people in the House, and 100 in the Senate, and they vote on thousands of pages of bill? I mean, with just one bill alone, and they vote on all kinds of stuff. Man, I could, I could go on all day long about Flashman, even back with the, the, what is it? The debt ceiling. He said, I don't, you know, I'm not gonna raise it, I'm not gonna raise the debt ceiling, then he capitulates. And it's just this stuff all the time, all the time, all the time. And I was with a friend of mine, and this omnibus bill came up. And I said, well, you know, at least we got Chuck Flashman, he won't vote for that madness. He looks up on his phone, he voted for it. This is what Rush Limbaugh went on about all day long, about how terrible, how much the Republicans sold us out, you know? We had a mandate from the people in 2004 and 2005, spending went up. I told my grandfather, I said, hey, we have, he's passed away in 2007, I said, we have, we own, we have the House, we have the Senate, we have the presidency, we'll cut taxes, we'll cut spending, I mean, it's gonna, we're finally, we finally won. And nothing happens. Nothing happens. Now, what we've seen is a total rebellion against that. We've seen the Jeb Bushes of the world run and just get destroyed, destroyed. I mean, I've heard all kinds of mad figures, like $150, $150 million spent in Vermont and had like 2% of the voters, something crazy. The voters now are choosing Trump, and they're choosing Cruz, they're the two furthest right, the two biggest anti-establishment candidates. And I think, you know, I told a friend of mine, I said, you know what? I don't care if I don't have any money. I don't care if my wife's pregnant right now. I took an oath to defend the Constitution, for many of these foreign and domestic, and by God, that's what I'm gonna do. I mean, I'll get the money, I'll run it, I'll get the money, we'll find a way to win. And if we don't do it this time, by God, we'll do it next time. And it's gonna take, you know, I'm surprised, we don't have 10,000 patriots rise up in the 3rd Congressional District and say, no Flashman, not this time, not this time. And I was reading, I think it was the Chattanooga Times Free Press, an article they had about him, and about how he had raised $800,000, and about how his opponent-to-be, Bo Watson, who dropped out, had raised so much, or was talking about getting in it or something. And I thought, you know, no one talks about substantive policy. No one talks about, well, you know what? Flashman's got in the bag because he voted against the omnibus bill. Flashman's got in the bag because he did this, because he did that. No, it's because he's got money. I mean, I don't know what kind of Joseph Goebbels type he's gonna hire to brainwash the 3rd Congressional District in voting for him, but it's because he's got money. Now, let me tell you something that, that really penetrates me deeply. I'm not a hero, but I walked with heroes. I had a platoon sergeant named Sergeant Briggs. Man, I think he won a Bronze Star for valor. Man was unbelie, you, he's most, he's the best-looking guy, he's the smartest guy, he's the strongest guy, you name it, he was Superman. And it took guys like that to arrest Taliban generals. It took guys like that to arrest Al Qaeda generals, okay? So, what, what do they do? They go to Gitmo, Guantanamo Bay, Cuba. And we have a president right now that's letting them go scot-free and go back to the battlefield to kill my brethren. Now, we've got, we've got a congressman in the 3rd Congressional District under Flashman that's not doing anything about it. And I promise you, I want your vote, and if you give me your vote, I'll do something about that. Because I don't care, I don't care if you're white, black, or yellow, if you commit high treason, by God, I'm gonna try to impeach you if I'm a congressman. I'm gonna do what I can. Now, the establishment's gonna be after me, I'm gonna be a crazy far-right, I mean, far-right wacko. But, but I'm doing my duty, you know? I took an oath for my country, and I'm doing it. So, and I'd like your vote August 4th. My name is actually Jeffrey Summersmith. Just remember Smith, it's simple, it's easy. Athens, where I grew up in Athens, it's Summer, my middle name is kinda like a pet name for me, but my first name's actually Jeffrey with a G. And I'll, I'll do everything for you guys. I was willing to die for you, you better believe I'll be willing to fight for you. Thank you very much for your time.
You wanna take some questions?
Yeah, sorry. First, first time I've ever done this, first speech even. Anybody have any questions?
Summer, when did you register for this? It must've been relatively recent.
Yes, we, we sent in the, well, back up a little bit. My dad is a teacher at McMinn County High School, and we, he, we worked with students and everything to fill out the petition. You have to have 25 signatures to run. We managed to pull in 52, no time flat. And we've sent it off to Nashville, and we, and sent my treasure stuff off, and we're still, we don't have a website, we don't have, everything you should have, we don't have right now, but we're working on it. We're gonna do what we can, so.
I was gonna ask next, how can we contribute? Sounds like you gotta hold our fire a little bit.
Just for a little while. Just for a little while, thank you so very much. And I'll get your, uh, name and some of your contact information, so I can contact you back, thank you.
You can write a post-it check, by the way.
I have a question or comment, good, Bill. Do you, uh, Chuck, did you receive from my wife, from mail, sort of by mail, copy of the wireless impeachment against Barack Hussein Obama? Who, and I think for accounts broken into three major categories, including treason against the United States. Uh, has died, whether it won't return her calls? He's, he's bought and paid for, and is, is not going to do what's right by the people.
Well, I have one thing that about returning calls. Um, I'm not gonna mention who it was, but he was contacted about going up in the, near, near the, near the border of Kentucky, and some of those counties up there. About going and meeting some of his constituents. And he told them, now I'm paraphrasing, I don't know how true it is. But he told them, "I have a million dollars, I don't need to see your county." That's how he feels about his constituents, you know? And, um, actually, the Republican Chairman of Hamilton County, I've ta- I contacted him last week. He said that he was an old-school guy, and he would like for me to talk to Flashman about why I was running against him and be a man about it. And I said, "Trust me, I'm, I'm mad enough to talk to Flashman, you better believe me." And I said, "Give him my number." And he said, "All right, well, he'll call you soon." I never got a phone call, it's been a week. Now, this is another point too, I need to bring up. Um, with Trump or Cruz being your next president, you're not gonna have the current Speaker of the House because he leans left in the Republican Party, and they're trying to, they're trying to work with the Democrats. God knows, I mean, I don't think you'd work with them. But, you're gonna need a new Speaker. We all know Chuck Flashman is too weak to be Speaker of the House. They're gonna need somebody more conservative, a lot more conservative. And they're gonna need somebody strong to lead them. I can be your Speaker of the House, I can, I can represent 3rd Congressional District, and I will be, I can be that. You know, Flashman, they're just, they're, I respect him. I met Flashman at a Athens Chamber of Commerce meeting they had, I think last year, the year before last. And he, he shook my hand, it was like shaking a wet noodle or something, I never, I can't believe he's a, he's a representative. I mean, regardless of politics, I mean, you should, you should be an assertive character, you really should be.
Flashman won't help you unless you're a major corporation in Tennessee.
Yeah, he's a corporate welfare lapdog for sure. Any more questions?
On the local level, they've always heard McMinn County's, uh, bid, they have a bid, a place to go.
Yes.
Can you comment on that somewhere, I mean, is that really true?
Oh, I'll, I'll comment on it hardcore. I, I met Dan at a Tea Party meeting in McMinn County, and he said, "You guys having a commission meeting?" I said, "Tell you what, get in my car, I go to every single one of them, we'll go to them." I know John Gentry well, I know his assistant Mark, yeah, they're debt-free. And the one liberal Democrat in the county government, I don't think she likes it that they're debt-free. But McMinn County has a strong heritage of being very, very right-wing conservative. I mean, they were diehard Unionists during the Civil War. And back then, things were a little bit different than you think, but, and then everybody knows with the Battle of Athens. Uh, the Battle of Athens is huge, I mean, I'm in New York, I'm in upstate New York, driving to work in my uniform. And I'm hearing Glenn Beck talk about my hometown, Athens, Tennessee. Now, and saying that too, because you guys are from Bradley County, I have connections in Bradley and, um, Hamilton County. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with, um, um, the water, water area here in, here in Cleveland, and the Blackburn Farm. Those are some of my people from Cleveland, and the Ramses. And my great-grandfather's buried over in East Ridge. So, I think the 3rd Congressional District needs a true southeast Tennessean. And it doesn't get any more southeast Tennessee than me. My people come from Monroe County, my people come from Bradley County, my people come from Hamilton County, and I am from McMinn County. But I'll tell you, McMinn is very conservative, and they're doing everything you can do right in county government.
They're debt-free.
And they're debt-free, yeah.
I heard one over the phone, I, I can't, I'd like to verify, maybe you know, uh, several years ago, McMinn County needed a new school. They hired somebody to build wood frames that go to school. A few years later, they needed another school. As far as told, they took the same wood frames and built the same school. No, they didn't have to duplicate it, it's expensive, have you heard that story?
Uh, no, I haven't. You know, a- after this is over with, I might could get you in contact with somebody that could tell you, tell you that, but I could, I don't know that in that detail.
That's a pretty good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Use the same wood frames to go build another school, save money.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very smart.
Yeah, well, we have, uh, John Gentry is our mayor right now, and he, he looks to save money. And you know, everybody should in government, and you know, you should look to save money. And, I always use a term though, you had, normally you get three bids in government for things. You have to be careful with some bids, because sometimes you'll build a school and have a flat roof, and then it will rain. Well, they're the lowest bid, yeah, but you gotta replace the roof every year, so sometimes you gotta use a little common sense too with your bids. But, um, one thing I, I wanna talk about too, is, um, committees in Congress. And it's, um, I would love to be on the Armed Services Committee. I know a little bit about the military. And what Flashman's not gonna give you, and what no representative nor senator is going to give you, is military plans. Now, you don't have to be a general for this, I mean, I'll give you a good example. Right now, North Korea and Iran, they're both, uh, beating on the, the war drum. And I was telling my treasurer the other day, there are certain weapons out there called EMPs. And it's a nuclear bomb that blow up and turn everybody's power out and everything. Um, I think we oughta have the anti-EMP-proof submarines. So, we hang, ha- can have a nuclear retaliatory thr- uh, response. I think we oughta have a, a whole triad system ought to be, ought to be that way. And we've heard, we've heard for years, oh, the Air Force and the nuclear missiles, they're not even operational. And this is going out so our enemies can see this. I mean, it's just absolute madness, all the things that take place. I mean, you could go through every single thing the federal government does and point out negative stuff. It's, it's unreal, our, our monetary policy, it's, it's unbelievable. No one, no one's trying to audit the Fed except for Ron Paul and maybe even Ted Cruz at times, but, I mean, you, you go on and on and on, you can go on and on about this stuff. But, for a, for a more positive note, you know, I'm gonna do everything out in my power to help our mil- to be for our military, to cut our taxes. And, and not reach across the aisle to work with Democrats. I'm a conservative, I want to represent a conservative district, I'm gonna do conservative things. And, you know, I like to, um, uh, use our justice system as an example. Our justice system's set up so 100 guilty men get away with something, so one innocent person doesn't. Now, I would like to do that with bills. If there's 100 good things in a bill, that Planned Parenthood's in there, by God, I don't wanna vote for it. If there's 100 good things in, in a bill, and, you know, raising taxes, or so- something crazy's in there, I'm not gonna vote for it, not gonna do it.
Just to comment, I think what we need is standalone bills, you don't put 100 things in a bill. You vote up and down on one thing.
One thing.
And that one thing gets funded, you don't get all these other things tied on to it.
I agree, but it should also take time. The American people have a right to know what's going on before we vote on one thing. I could see Congress sitting down and saying, "All right, we'll do one, one on them," and then they, they vote on 800 things in one day. We oughta do it where the people have time to find out what's going on.
We don't need to be passing 100 things a day, you should.
Yeah, you're right, you know? It's gonna take some common sense, so. Any more questions?
I can keep asking, but I wanna ask one more question. You've been in the military, are you still in the military or?
No, I'm out, I'm out.
Tell, tell me, how is the morale in the military for a long time?
Well, I'll tell you this. The last year I was in the service, our morale for our company was very low because we weren't being picked for deployment. So, from that standpoint, I couldn't say, but you know, Obama's the reason for that, because of the drawback, the, the pullback in Afghanistan. But before that, it, um, we had issues with thinking our pay was gonna get cut off. We thought we were gonna get paid, now, we had a Soldier, Soldier Sailor Act, we still have, we still keep our bills up, but we had families to feed. We had some money cut from the Army when I was in there, where when we went to the field, we had to pay for our own meals. And now, we, in saying that, we're, when, when, in saying that. When, 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 when saying that though, we had to, um, we had, we had, we needed that pay, we depended on that pay for the survival of our families. I had a wife who couldn't get her nursing license switched over soon enough in New York, because their bureaucracy's so big. I think it took like 10 months for her to finally get it. And we were hurting financially, and now they're out there saying, "Oh, you're going to the field this whole month, and by God, you're gonna use your, your, uh, your food allowance to pay for it." Well, I've got a wife that needs fed at home, you know, I've got, and it, that's the kind of stuff we'd see, it's time and time again. Well, it comes time to train, oh, money's not there, sorry, you can't go. And, you know, uh, we had, I'll tell you something else, there's this stuff called LSAT. And you, you put it on 40-millimeter grenades to go into Mark 19. And everybody there says, "You know, you know, you know that gives you cancer. You know, it gives you cancer." And I had, I had another sergeant that died of cancer recently, cause it, and I don't know if that was the case, but we do all kinds of stuff. I was training on that very exact same weapon, and you're taught to open the feed tray cover on these machine guns and turn your head away, and tell your assistant gunner to turn away. So, I did that, turned away, and because it was so cold, all the cold air flooded into the, to the, to the Mark 19, and it blew up. And pushed me all the way up, you know? If I, and I had somebody tell me, "You know, if your face had been in that, you'd be blind, you probably wouldn't have a face either." I mean, these guys, they'll go out just training and get killed doing stuff. I mean, it's stuff all the time, and you're treated like, you're treated terribly. I mean, there's not enough stuff we can do for our soldiers. Now, I'm a conservative, we need to, you know, cut where we can, I mean, we use some common sense, but our, our soldiers shouldn't have to, to suffer. I mean, look at the VA, take the VA. Now, listen to this, why do we have VA centers? I mean, I understand the one down Chattanooga, you've got something wrong with you, go down there and get looked at, I understand that completely. But like in Athens, we have a VA center, why? Why can't we just give them a voucher, go get a private doctor like anybody else? Well, I mean, may, excuse me, pardon me, but I mean, even the Medicare system for VA, for the VA would be better than some of the stuff they're getting. These people die, they're dying, they're dying in the VA, it's unreal. Any other questions? You had a question?
Second Amendment, what's your position on that?
Man, I'm an old infantry, I mean, I'm an infantryman, I've been pro-Second Amendment my whole life. I've, I've shot guns my whole life, you will never meet anyone more Second Amendment than me. And I don't believe it's for hunting purposes, I don't believe it's, you know, for recreation, I believe it's to be able to fight back against your tyrannical government. And, and government just isn't. In Washington DC, you know, we had an election being stolen in 1946 in Athens, Tennessee, and they didn't use silly putty to push the sheriff out, no, they used guns. Now, I'm, I'm the most pro-Second Amendment person you'll ever meet in your, I mean, in your life.
Do you for the constitutional carry to protest in Tennessee as well?
I shelved that down under there.
Are you watching, we're not only for the garden, I don't hire, it's all views, but are you for that?
Well, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not aware of what's going on with that right now. But, um, I will tell you.
Would you be for that though, for constitutional care?
I mean, I think that you shouldn't have to have a carry permit. I, I think that, you know, I spent six or eight hundred dollars getting different things together to ke- so I could have a carry permit. I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous. I mean, I think you all be allowed to carry, I mean, it's carry. And if you go somewhere and, let's, cause you're not, if you're convicted felon, you can't get a carry permit. Well, you can't get a gun. I mean, so, yeah. Now, let's say, let's say you're a police officer and he's carrying a gun somewhere. And you go over and check him and you say, hey, where's your carry permit? And you go get it, you're not, you're still have to go back to your cop car and run a background. If you have no carry permit, you, when you do a background on him anyway, you would see he had a felony, he not allowed to have one. So, you could arrest him. I mean, so, I mean, there's a, I mean, it's just a way, it's a.
They know when they run their hours.
It's all, it's all about the money. Follow the money. I mean, it's a tax.
If you get a carry permit, you gotta renew it every so long.
Yes, you do. Every four years.
Yep.
Is there one of these army before they go back there anyway?
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a question, you know, mind you, so you know, if you're out, these guys we always ask, how do you guys, you've been there. Uh, let's say that, you know, you're building, uh, decided that, you know, you're gonna have everyone taking out of arms. We, our military turned against us. I mean, you've been there.
Well, Obama did a great job of purging a lot of conservative generals. So, I mean, so, when, when that day is to ru- to ruin, oh, you will, I mean, you're gonna have some, some higher ups. Um, Jefferson says, "The tree of liberty from time to time needs to be watered with the blood of tyrants and patriots." You know, you're gonna have a, a chaos in that kind of scenario. But I, I mean, we, we.
Obviously, a lot of infantrymen, they are higher ups.
Yeah.
This stuff is not a point. Will you ever, you said, you know, you're a person.
I know, I know, when I was an infantryman, I wouldn't have done it. Because it's a, uh, and I wouldn't have done it not just for the Constitution, but because it's an unlawful order. It's an unlawful order.
Like everything else, it's broke.
It's an u- it's an unlawful order. Yeah. 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 The problem you have is not with your everyday infantrymen doing things. The problem you have is with your everyday Air Force pilot. With your everyday guy who sits behind a drone. I mean, infantrymen can, they can do so much, but you know, they can cluster bomb you to death, you know? So, Americans have preserved the law of rights over the years because of the Second Amendment. But we're reaching a point now with technology, even the Second Amendment's not gonna be able to protect you from the ty- tyranny. I mean, for crying out loud, if you tried to lead a revolution nowadays, guys, they'd freeze your bank accounts. What are you, what are you gonna do? You can't even buy anything. That's, that's the kind of overreach we have in government. Yeah, you're, yeah. But, I mean, thank you for.
You don't have any silver or gold?
But, uh, I mean, I really thank every one of you for being in the Tea Party. In two thousand nine, when I, I was still in college. Uh, my dad and I, on April fifteenth, went down to Atlanta and participated in the huge one that had like fifteen thousand people down there. Had Joe LaPlummer and Sean Handy, it was really fun. I'm so happy that seven years on, we're still in existence. It's a true blessing, you know? It really is, it's a true blessing. And McMinn County, we all sit around and eat while we do it, and it's. You know, and, and here, it's more attentive, you know? Some people are like, ah, would you be quiet for me? I'm trying to eat my cookie or something, but. But is there any more questions? Thank you.
These people that start out to, you know, go into office to fix something that they think needs fixed. Or to represent people the way they think they ought to be re- whatever. What is it that causes them all to eventually get into the pocket of the big bankers? Totally under the thumb. I mean, now Ted Cruz, everybody says, he's so conservative. Well, his wife is a to- is a top executive for Goldman Sachs.
Goldman Sachs.
Yeah, he owns shares of Goldman Sachs.
So, so, so what, you know, I, come on.
Well, I'll, I'll give you one good reason they, they get into bed with corporations. It's for the same reason that I have a hard time running against Chuck. Now, everybody, everybody, everybody needs, everybody needs to knit, to, to remember this. It's for the same reason I, I'm gonna have a hard time running against Chuck Establishment Flashman. Because when old Chuck Establishment Flashman goes to run, he worries about big money. Chattanooga Times Free Press says, how much money does he have? He doesn't worry about some peon in Athens, Tennessee, who's ta- who's mad at him for voting for the anonymous bill. He's not worried about, worried about what conservatives think. He's not worried about all that stuff. He's worried about how much money he has. It's about money. You know, if you, eh, if you go out and educate enough people and have a grassroots, grassroots movement to turn opinions and turn minds towards our goals and towards the things we want, then we can win. But I mean, look at this. This is Bradley County. It's huge. Was, was it like ninety-four thousand people live here? And look how many patriots we have. Look how many patriots we have.
Well, how many people are on, that get money from the government?
Mm-hmm.
That is your problem. It's about fifty percent now.
Yeah.
And they're always going to vote for whoever is going to, uh, distribute in, income to, or.
Exactly.
Whether it's a government contract or whether it's an entitlement or whatever it is.
Well, see, here's, here's something else politicians.
That was your fighting.
Yeah, here's something else politicians won't tell you about. Now, I'm, I'm very, I'm very conservative. And I have my, my opinions about the gold standard. I have my opinions about entitlement programs. But with those things be- being put to the side, someone like Chuck Flashman, who would be more for Social Security and more for Medicare than, than your average day conservative. Um, he's killing Social Security. There are. He's killing Medicare. And let me tell you how. Because when they talk about cutting back on government spending, they talk about entitlement programs, they don't talk about congressional discretionary spending that's huge. Cut there first, before you cut Social Security, before you cut Medicare, people have worked hard and put into it, cut their discretionary spending. But they won't wanna cut there. Because they want to go over to some big corporation, say, how do you want me to do your bidding in Washington? I'll give you, I'll give you these earmarks. And the debate between Weston Wap and Chuck Flashman in twenty fourteen, which is, eh, they talked about the Chickamauga Dam. And the Chickamauga Dam in Chattanooga is the end all be all apparently. And they fought over that, fought over that. And Chuck Flashman's, was talking about Weston's dad saying, yeah, the bill that you had for that, it was full of earmarks, full of earmarks, but I've taken a broken system and fixed it. They're, you know, they're, they're worried about what they, what kind of votes they can get by, by paying people off with your money. It's your money and they're using it to get votes with. It's a broken system, you know?
Well, that goes back to what I said earlier, too many things attached to a bill. Let the bill stand alone. If there's something that needs to be done, then, then do it.
Yeah.
Don't, don't, don't piggyback everything else off of it.
Yeah. Well, you know, tell you this, I'm, I'm you guys. I'm you guys. I think I make a great candidate because I have a master's degree. I have the education to at least stand on the same, same stage as him. I have a, a military background. I was willing to give you everything I had. But I didn't have to pay the ultimate price. And I've worked job, I have, I mean, you can ask, you can ask Michael over here, my treasurer. I've been a man of many hats. I've worked in hospitals, I've worked in Dollar General, I've worked in companies. I've, I've been a, a chief executive for a city. I've done it all. I've done it all. I, I wasn't, you know, was never an attorney. Everything that I, that I got out, I earned, you know? And my mom and dad aren't rich. It's gonna take you guys to get out there and get me in there, you know? And I promise you, and I promise you, I'll never betray you. Another thing is with term limits. I want to do the George Washington thing. I want to do, I think it's four terms, two years each. After eight years, I want out. I want out. I don't wanna be there forever. I don't wanna hand it off to my son like Chuck Flashman's gonna do with his, like, like Jimmy, Jimmy Duncan, Jimmy Duncan Junior have done. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that. I wanna do my time and get out. Maybe I'll run for senate. If, you know, maybe I'll run for president. But once you've been there for eight years, my gosh, what are you doing? I mean, it's, I mean, Muammar Gaddafi did this. Muammar Gaddafi had asylum in the United States. He had, he had all the money he could ever wish for. But the power was so much. The power meant more than his money, meant more than his sons that he lost, meant more than his whole family, meant more than him. He died for his power. And we have that from, we have, we have that in local government, all the way up to federal. The power's all encompassing. It's more important than any, any amount of money. It's more important than your family and everything. I wanna do four terms, eight years and get out. Now, and I wanna lead by example and I wanna push to, for term limits too. So, anything else? Thank you guys so much for having me.
I'd like just to add something to that. Here's something you might put in your repertoire. You might look at this a little bit, that actually, you know, you could, without having to induce term limits, you could return to the Constitution, you would have term limits. Because actually, if you returned and got rid of the Seventeenth Amendment, then your senators would be elected by the state, which, you know, by the state legislatures. And then when they did that, they would represent the state and state's rights. And, you know, we need to get away from having a state representatives represent seven hundred fifty, seven hundred sixty thousand people. The Constitution says thirty-five to four thou- thou- shall represent not more than four, thirty-five to forty thousand people. So, if you went to that system, yes, you would have to increase the number of representatives. But you would also have the average guy being able to run an election, uh, because he's only having to, you know, to, uh, to, to deal with thirty-five to forty thousand voters uh, in his, in his district. And so, that's a very doable deal. You don't need big media. Uh, much more so, because they could keep an eye on you, you know, which I'm a big advocate of, you know? There's a lot of things you could do without ever getting involved in this con-con deal and all this, you know, the, uh, which I think is a big mistake. You know, I mean, I know our state, they voted to put that in, but that's a big problem. Cause once they get in there and start changing stuff, there ain't nothing that can't stop them from changing anything.
They figure out a way to revert that, because you tell them you wanna revert back to the Constitution.
Yeah, well, you gotta tell them there's a, you know, you gotta tell them there's a, 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 a luncheon somewhere and they won't show up to vote, so. Well, any comments? Yeah, I, I know. Yeah, you gotta go. Yeah. Well, I appreciate y'all coming. Uh, thanks a lot.
Man, uh, in the upcoming elections, there, there are four school boards that, uh, and first, third, fifth, and seventh district.
And the sixth. The sixth has to, because she was appointed, so she'll have to run. And if she wins, she'll have to run again in two years. Put her back on schedule, so.
So, anyway, uh, the word I'm getting is that, uh, the people that used to control Bradley County's school system, Board of Education. Have gotten together and got up candidates to run against some of these people. So, they're trying to retake the power.
Yeah, um, I think that you're probably reasonably safe in the first. The third, you know, if he comes and asks for some help, I think we oughta give somebody to help him. Because I think that, you know, you don't wanna get Teddy Bryson in there. You know, because Teddy is, you know, he's a, he, well, and Teddy's a crony for, for Troy Weathers.
Troy Weathers.
You know, so, we don't, we don't need to, we don't need to re, bu- put that situation back into play. Um, I don't think the sixth has any opposition that I know of. Uh, I'm sure. I don't th- I haven't heard anything, I haven't heard of any opposition in the fifth.
There is, uh, it didn't, uh, was the guy used to pay in the school system, this is bad.
Now, you talk about this running against, not against Charlie.
Yeah, against Charlie.
No, Charlie's, no.
Charlie's seventh.
Seventh. Yeah, I'm talking about the fifth with that, uh, I don't think there's any in the fifth, but yes, the, the, there is some in the sevens also. I understand that Dillard's doesn't have any opposition, so.
I don't think he does.
He's explaining that he's gonna stay in, so, you know, and to be really honest with you, Charlie, Rodney's been a lot better since he got rid of the rest of those yo-hos. I mean, he's done a pretty, I mean, really, he's kind of, you know, he's kinda said, okay, this is, that's what he was doing, you know, and, uh.
See, if we're talking about reelection and this, and we figure we can start campaigning, we got thirteen people to meet for election.
Uh, one, two.
Especially with more than, you know, the, 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 the.
Yeah, I could probably strongly name ten. Yeah. Well, I mean, that's the, that's what, the. Yeah, that's a, you know, you're gonna, that's a city district. And, you know, um, you're gonna have to have a viable candidate that runs. You gotta realize that when they run in those city districts, they're really dealing with voters that, that think a twelve million dollar gym over here at the high school is a good idea. You know?
The Bernie Sanders people, right?
Yeah, so. You know, I, I think somebody could win in that district, I think you'd have to work real hard. I don't think the seventh would be. They like their incompetence over there. Well, thank y'all, appreciate you coming.